Babcock Ranch Shelter Clarification. When I got back from Tallahassee last week, up there for the Floor Association of Counties Legislative Day, and had some good meetings up there, basically focused on our list appropriations list, met with, had a lot of meetings. We had the water policy meeting as well. F A C has established a water policy team, and Commissioner Trex and I represent Charlotte County on that. But I got back, it was becoming quite odd. I sat down and took some time to go back through the previous discussions on this matter, reviewed everything again, and I was starting to get emails. There was a lot of misinformation, misunderstanding of what the board actually had done, or hadn't done. So basically, I thought it was important, with Ms. Nolton, we both agreed that there was a real need to sit down and develop a letter to clarify to everyone, whether it's the folks in Tallahassee, or the people in our community, what this board really has done so far relative to this issue as a board. And I was thinking, the only thing that doesn't show up, obviously, on this is that who it would go to. It'd be my recommendation that the letter would go to the chairman of our legislative delegation, which is Representative Grant, Mike Grant. And we would copy Senator Albritton, and Senator Gruders, and also, I would guess, the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee. The way I understand it at this point, I think the paper reported it here recently, at this point, the House has got a placeholder, I guess, of about $300,000 relative to the $8 million request, 300,000. In the Senate, my understanding is, there's nothing assigned for the project in the Senate. It's at zero right now. And as I think we all know, but I'm not sure the public knows, both chambers have to come together and decide on what they're going to do ultimately, and they do that through a conferencing. That's probably several weeks out, I believe. And then ultimately, that's voted on by the entire body, and then it all goes to the governor. The governor has the opportunity to sit down and look at line item vetoes. So that's essentially where we are. I guess my request would be that, I'm sure you've had a chance to review it, I'd like to get the board's authorization to, I'd want to reformat it, put it on our letterhead, and like I said, address it to Representative Grant, but I'd really appreciate y'all's input. Commissioner Teseo, you're first up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, it's taken over a month to get here, but I'd like to point out exactly what this letter is clarifying. It says, "The purpose of this letter is to provide clarification regarding House Bill 3139, Southwest Florida Regional Emergency Shelter. Kitson &amp; Partners submitted an appropriations project request for Southwest Florida Regional Emergency Shelter in partnership with Charlotte County, and insinuated that this particular project was a Charlotte County top legislative priority. To clarify, Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners have not taken official action on the proposed Babcock Ranch Hurricane Shelter, or any proposed partnership or funding agreement." I've been saying that for over six weeks, sir. And now we have a letter that the county attorney wrote, that this board never took any action on any part of this Babcock Ranch shelter proposal. And there's a reason we have public hearings, and there's a reason by statute defines what the authority of the board is. We have local, our own board rules define what it is to have a public hearing, and how to take motion or action on an item. And a prime example of that was played out today. We had people that spoke for and against this project in this setting, so we can take that into consideration. We never had that with this project. It never was approved by the board. And just to give you an example, you look at this appropriations project request, it has board authority written all over it, as if it actually came before the board and we approved it, and you folks had that chance to come up to the mic and speak. The Florida statute defines the authority of the board, 125.011. County means any county operating under a home rule charter, which county by resolution of its Board of County Commissioners elects to exercise the powers herein conferred. Use of the word county within the above provision shall include Board of County Commissioners of such county. Board of County Commissioners includes all members of the Board of County Commissioners in a county, whether their offices are created by the Constitution, legislature, or by home rule charter. Our own rules, 120, Section D, when action to be taken by motion, resolution, or ordinance, all actions of the commissioners may be taken by motion, resolution, or ordinance. These documents, this document, has a requister line asking for $8 million. Kitson &amp; Partners, Babcock Ranch, in partnership with Charlotte County. I'm going to ask the county attorney a question. Is that false?
Sorry, Commissioner, can you repeat the question?
Yeah. Under requister, it says, "Organization: Kitson &amp; Partners Babcock Ranch in partnership with Charlotte County." Are we in partnership in this requister? Is that false or true?
That's not correct.
That's false. That's a false statement.
True.
The Charlotte County Commission recognizes the immense need for a shelter to serve local residents, and had made this one of their top legislative priorities. Is that false?
When it refers to this, if it's speaking to Babcock Ranch Fieldhouse Hurricane Shelter, that is incorrect.
Okay, so that's false.
Correct.
Okay. So, this document was represented to an appropriations subcommittee stating that this is in partnership with the Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners. It says, "We've made this appropriation," because the question is in here, 15, and then subsection B asks about this appropriation as a top legislative priority. So based on those representations, the subcommittee approved this thing. They think that this document, and this specific shelter at Babcock Ranch, has the full faith and backing of the people of Charlotte County. You had your chance to come up to the mic and follow our own board rules, but you didn't. But this document, as the county attorney just says, has false representations. This isn't about whether you support Babcock Ranch, or you like Sid Kitson, or, you know, you just want a shelter out there. This has to do with due process. This has to do with following board rules. I shouldn't, as a sitting commissioner, have to find out about this by opening up the newspaper. And then when I contact my state representative to tell him I know nothing about this, I have to hear his response in the newspaper to shut the hell up. And then he also goes on to say, he has the support of the commissioners. He called everybody and spoke to them. He didn't call me. Is that how we conduct public business and establish priorities of the board? You pick up the phone and call? I don't know what my colleague said. I don't know what was told to them on the phone. That's not how it works, gentlemen. We know that. It's in our own board rules. And this is probably the most egregious example of why we don't do things through phone calls and backdoor meetings, and why we follow our rules. Florida statute 286.0114, public meetings, reasonable opportunity to be heard. For this section, "Board or commission" means a board or commission of any state agency or authority of any agency or authority of county, municipal corporation, or political subdivision. Members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before the Board of County Commissioners. The opportunity to be heard is subject to the rules and policies adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. And we have established rules. The statute goes on to say, "Rules or policies of the board or commission which govern the opportunity to be heard are limited to those that, one, provide guidelines, provide procedures, provide a specific period to speak." And it's so serious, it says, "Whenever an action is filed against the Board of County Commissioners, to enforce this section, the court shall assess reasonable attorney's fees against such board or commission if the court determines that defendant of such action acted in violation of this section." This is your freedom of speech, folks, right here. You didn't get to exercise it. We didn't follow our own board rules and procedures as outlined in the Florida statutes. And the fact that this had to go on from five constitutional officers for six weeks, and now it required a letter of clarification. Do you want to know why there's a letter of clarification? Because I kicked the door open. I'm speaking about it. Our chairman just said he's starting to get emails and letters. That's what happens when you turn a light on, you know, it's like the disinfectant. All of a sudden, everybody's looking for the hills, and looking for excuses. And with that, even if you look at this letter, after all of that, after the letter says, "The board took no action on this," the next paragraph, "But we're going to direct the county administrator and legislative manager to monitor the progress of the bill," in the same letter, if you can believe, that's government at work right there. What a sham on the people. The evidence is right in front of us. It's our constitutional duty. Here's our legislative agenda. We worked on this last September. We had to have a workshop on it. Our legislative manager painstakingly went through everything that was an appropriation, everything that was legislative, everything that was policy. And we did have a support item on there to increase efforts to build hurricane shelters. But that's irrespective of what's gone on with Babcock Ranch. Those things, when you use the name, county commission, commissioner, Board of County Commissioners, that represents to anybody reading that document that you guys got a chance to speak and we got to vote. This letter proves it. The board's taken no action on anything out there. And here we are, trying to write a letter to say we'll monitor it. I'm going to read into the record a statement. "On three separate occasions, February 26th, March 12th, and March 26th, 2019, I notified the board during public hearings that an $8 million appropriation request dated February 4th, 2019, for a regional shelter was submitted to the state of Florida. Pursuant to Florida statute 216.051, Section 1, the appropriation request should have tangible community support to members of the legislature, a state agency, or governor. In answering that statutory requirement, the appropriation request form represented that this is the commission's top legislative priority. By statute and board rule, this language would have required public notice, a public hearing, public input, and board action." You can't have tangible community support without public input. Let the record show, no board action was taken. Let the record show that a complete listing of the 2019 board-approved legislative agenda items do not include this appropriation or HB 3139, making the representation as the commission's top legislative priority patently false. This is also supported by today's clarification letter. Any arguments otherwise are now debunked. On March 5th, 2019, Representative Mike Grant told the House Transportation, Tourism, and Subcommittee that this is a public, quote, "This is a public-private partnership in conjunction with Babcock Ranch Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners, the U.S. Economic Development Administration, Florida Power and Light, TECO. The bill has the support of the Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners. Let the record show, on March 26th, 2019, the county attorney advised the board that this did not have the support of the board and was not voted on. Pursuant to Florida statute 125.011, Florida statute 286.0114, and Board Rule 1.20, Section D, these statements would have required a public hearing, public input, and board action. Let the record show, no such action was taken. I notified Mr. Grant of these facts on three separate occasions. And his response can be found in the Charlotte Sun newspaper dated April 5th. Mr. Grant insisted, 'I shut the hell up.' Also by phone, he told me it was my problem, and he hung up. On March 31st, 2019, in regards to HB 3139, the funding requister, Kitson &amp; Partners, told the Sun that the matter did not go before the Charlotte County Commission as a whole because, quote, "We had a deadline to submit the requested funding. We had no choice." So his urgency and his no choice meant this commission and the people got bypassed. As recently as yesterday's newspaper, Representative Mike Grant said, quote, "My conversations with individual members of the Board of County Commissioners confirmed majority support." Imagine that. Imagine that. This is another admission that this legislation did not go before the board as a whole, and was done privately without a public hearing and vote. The public and I don't have a clue what was discussed behind closed doors. This is a violation of board rules and Florida statutes. With this knowledge, the Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners failed to notify the appropriations subcommittee that false information and representations were used during consideration of HB 3139 for an appropriation request of $8 million of taxpayer funds. The board infringed upon the voting rights of the citizens by knowingly and willingly letting a private individual usurp the authority of the board in the application of securing taxpayer dollars. The board empowered the unaccountable and unelected in matters of policy and budget. This authority is strictly vested and reserved for constitutional officers to be faithfully discharged while performing their duties as county commissioners. The board failed to protect the Charlotte County taxpayers' constitutional rights of due process and free speech. The board failed to provide due care in protecting the public trust in the rights of all our citizens. All matters of policy, whether you think they are good or bad, must come before us. There is no special rule or pathway for the powerful and influential to circumvent the board and infringe upon the fundamental rights that are guaranteed to all. Our oath of office compels us to protect these rights. The Constitution and our board rules preserve equity of treatment for all citizens. There is no compromise." And I got to tell you something, gentlemen. When you have facts like this, our own board rules, Florida statutes, why in the heck are we fighting not to vote and let the people speak on this? We literally have to understand what our positions are through opening up the newspaper on an appropriation for $8 million. And another farce, this thing isn't just to help strengthen the building for hurricanes. This whole project, if you read the document, this is a $19.7 million fieldhouse to be used as a shelter in times of emergency. The primary use is a fieldhouse. None of the funding's coming from Sid Kitson or Babcock Ranch. This is asking for $8 million from the state right now, federal $2 million, another two from local, which is us. They're going to get $3 million from FPL, and they're going to go back next year, the proposals, to get the rest. This is to build the whole structure, the whole fieldhouse. This isn't just to harden it. I'll be honest with you, I still can't believe we're sitting here today debating this. We have a letter of clarification now from the county attorney. The board took no action, yet it was represented, based on statute, those representations that the board did take action are in there. That just, that goes to the legislature agencies and the governor. The governor. We now know those are phony, false, and fake. And the comments I get from my colleagues are, "We already voted for it, 5-0. I got to get on the road," and no comment. This isn't how we conduct business. We went through a process to adopt our legislative items. I told you, we went through a workshop. None of this was there. None of this was there for this appropriation, or this bill. The bill was told to the appropriations committee it has the support of the Charlotte County Commission. Jeanette, is that true or false? Does the HB 3139 have the support of the Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners?
No, it does not.
Okay. So here we go. A legal document used to secure money, whether it's state or local, in this case, $8 million, is a phony, and no one's doing anything about it. There's only one course of action, gentlemen. And Mike Grant told us in the paper. I had to read the paper to find out what Mike Grant would do. Alls he said, he said he would be glad, not angry, not disappointed, he would be glad to pull the bill with a majority vote. That's only three of us, gentlemen, to do the right thing. Is it really that hard? And you know what Sid Kitson had to say to that in the paper? "I'm okay." So if Sid Kitson's okay with it, and Mike says he'll be glad to do it, we got to get on the Mike Grant hotline today and tell him to pull the bill. This can't go forward. It violates everything that we're here and everything we're supposed to serve. Is there two people, two more people among us that'll do the right thing today? Or are we going to go on and let this sham continue all the way up to the governor's I'm really eager to hear somebody defend the indefensible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, I have asked for the board to consider this particular letter. I would need, I would need a motion, any edits to the, whatever, you know? But I would appreciate some feedback on the letter. I do think, and Ms. Nolton, I guess, if we're in the routine here of asking you, do you think this, this letter, you drafted it, with my coaching as to how we, the content of it, does this set the record straight, so to speak, as to the particular items that Commissioner Teseo's brought up relative to what board action has taken place, one hasn't taken place?
I believe it does.
Sets the record straight for the Board of County Commissioners. I think that's important. I don't know that, my preference would be that if, once they get this letter, and the world gets this letter, that they review it and decide what it really means. I mean, that's, I think that's the other aspect of this. If, what, you know, the concerns you have, Commissioner Teseo, when this letter arrives in Tallahassee-
Sir, I want you to rebut anything I said. It's got false representations, Mr. Chair. Don't try and sugarcoat it and send the letter up there and wonder what happens.
Commissioner Teseo, you're out of order.
Well, look-
Please.
Please. You debate the facts, sir. You told me yourself, follow the facts.
Please, sir. What I'm trying to say is, is that we've got, this letter would go to Tallahassee, needs to be reviewed by the House staff, Mr. Grant, Representative Rodriguez, I mean, he's the chairman of the Appropriations Committee in the House. I'm sure all those folks will look at it and decide whether or not there's been something done that needs to be. I'm not a lawyer. I'm an engineer, and I'm trusting my county attorney says that this, this letter sets the record straight. Commissioner Deutsch, you're in the queue.
We're talking about facts. I just want to, for the record, just throw out a few things out, which I think we're all aware of. The five of us have been duly elected to represent the people of Charlotte County to the best of our abilities. We took an oath stating to do that. This board, and it's known, it's agreed, we never met, we never authorized anyone, we never took any action on a proposed shelter at Babcock Ranch, and everyone here knows that. Our state representative was duly elected by the people of Charlotte County to represent Charlotte County. He took an oath. He raised his hand to represent the people of this county to the best of his ability. I believe that with very few and rare exceptions, we all take that oath very seriously, each one of us, and work at our best to follow through on that. And I also believe that Representative Grant is doing the same thing. However, and I think this is part of the problem as it comes to our attention now, I don't believe, and Jeanette, I'm going to ask you this question too, but I don't believe that this board is authorized to oversee any operations of our state legislature. To the best of my knowledge, and I, and by the way-
Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner.
Yeah, and to the, you know, I've served at the state level, as most of you know, in another place and time, and I've served here. And, you know, there may have been some communication problems, and maybe some things that I don't know, and some things that Joe didn't know, because people did come, they, we have our one-on-ones. And we do this all the time with all kinds of groups, because the only time we can meet officially because of the sunshine law is in a gathering like this, where we take minutes and we're on, we're on the record, and everyone's aware of it. Sometimes we're nervous in the elevator, talk about the weather, because we may have to vote on a hurricane. You know, the reality is, we really don't have any discussions unless it's about a ballgame or the weather, or something very remote, ever, to the best of my knowledge, with each other about anything that's ever going to come up to vote. However, as part of our standard operational procedure, we all have many meetings, to the extent that our personal schedules allow, with people in the community on an idea at any given time. The people from the chamber come in, the people from Economic Development Group come in, the people that want sidewalks, the people that want a bike path, and they'll come in, or the, both chambers have come in and met with us, they'll, you know, and a number of other groups, they'll, and Mr. Kitson came in and met with us. And Mr. Lashley has come in and met with us. Just this past week, I had someone else come in and meet with us about a concept of an idea they have for something in Punta Gorda. Now, I'm not there in the other four rooms when they meet with my colleagues. And if a party comes in and meets with, you know, with Commissioner Teseo, or Dougherty, or Constance, or Truex, I'm going to assume, or understand, the conversation was probably pretty similar to the conversation that I had, and the information that was given to them is the same as the information that was given to me, and at some point, if we're going to do anything about it, we're going to go public. I think in this case, I'm, and I'm not sure, because we haven't talked about it, I'm not sure if Mr. Kitson came in and spoke to my other four colleagues. I think he probably did. I don't know. And I know, and there was discussion about this project, because we've been talking about this informally, on again, off again, for at least a year. And, by the way, that happens with lots and lots and lots of things. Anyway, and I, and I don't know the details, but I can only assume that the state representative filed this bill thinking it was in the best interest of Charlotte County. Now, just a step aside, I could stand and debate whether or not it makes sense to have a shelter out at Babcock Ranch. I could probably come up with a whole bunch of supportive ideas why it might be a good idea. I could probably come up with some other ideas why it might not be a good idea, and we could even, at some point, talk about whether or not $1 or $1.01 or $1 million or whatever of county money should be put aside to that. Those are issues that we haven't gotten to do publicly yet. There, I'll say this right now, I've made other suggestions, because I think we desperately, you know, having had a building destroyed by Charlie, and having gone through Irma and our other hurricane situations, and gone out and visited the shelters in the last storm, we need shelter space, we do. The reality is, if you take a look at Charlotte County, most of it's pretty darn low. Except for maybe Babcock, Babcock, except for maybe Deep Creek, and a little piece of property over by veterans, there's not an awful lot of properties that are high enough that are acceptable for a shelter. And we've all made suggestions. And I'm going to, I'm going to throw two out here right now, as premature as it might be. When the folks first came in to talk to us about Apostle at Murdoch Village, and they were going to be building a large building, and this was about a year, year and a half ago, and they're still, still working on it, I said, "Wow." I said, "If they're going to build that big building for meetings, or mini-event center, whatever it is, I would seriously consider having the county come up with extra fill to make it high enough that we could use it for landfill." And we could do that, and they could still build their building and make, and that was a great idea, but guess what? Everything around Murdoch Village is so low, there'd be no way of getting there if we built it up. And except for the Bachman property, and I'll tell you this, I just discussed this, and my colleagues have no clue about this, as a possibility of a shelter, because we're looking for something for public works to house the vehicles, and one of the early discussions, we're looking out for housing now, and we didn't get too many responses on that. If we built a great, big, huge garage facility on the Bachman property for our public works vehicles, that possibly could be used as a shelter, and maybe a good one. However, Ray, was it you said that at one time we had discussed doing something there in Northport and Sarasota? Sarasota didn't like the idea at all, because it pretty much was going to border on where they are. You know, so we're always looking for ideas, we're always looking at ways, I believe all of us, those of us that are elected, to best serve the people of Charlotte County. But to, while we work together, and I'd like to see that we, you know, certainly, we don't always all agree, and it's probably a good thing that we disagree, we do it respectfully because we want to work together for what we all believe is the best for Charlotte County. And I'm sure that other people at the State House- And—and I'm sure that other people at the State House and in Washington, in their own way, work to their best ability to whatever they can do to benefit the area, the people they're elected to serve. But I'm frustrated by this to a degree because I couldn't find anywhere in the statutes, and I probably don't—certainly don't know them as well as people that have looked at specific sections, where we have any responsibility or authorized to override or—or, you know, review what the state legislature does. And—and that was a question I asked our county attorney, so we really don't have a mechanism to do that. And I think the letter is a step in the right direction to clarify any misunderstanding that's sort of involved for this process. But do we have any—Jeanette, I—I thought I heard your answer, but we don't have any oversight right over the state legislature or the governor in any way, do we, directly? None that I know of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah. So I—I think what we're trying to do with the letter is to try and clarify this Board's position that we never took any action on it and we never discussed it. So I've gone on to one.
Commissioner Toseo, before I come to you, see if the other two have—
Well, I queued in, sir.
I know, but you—I was just trying to be courteous to the other members of the Board.
Well, they know how to push the button. That's our rules.
Just to see if they—
Oh, wait, you're fine.
Very good. Go ahead.
All right. You mentioned the one-on-one process, and you don't know what was talked about. That's why we have public hearings, okay? You—you just listed two or three different options. You didn't get to say those options because it was already decided for us what our shelter option was by somebody else. You don't get to say what your ideas are. The Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners was signed on without our knowledge that this is our top legislative priority in partnership with Babcock Ranch. There's a separation of powers. You just asked the county attorney, "Well, there's nothing in there." There's a separation of powers. Mike Grant gets to sponsor the bills he—he wants with his authority. We get to do what we do with our authority. He used our authority and didn't get the vote. He can't do that. That's why we have separations of powers. That's why he's a—he's a state representative and we're local county commissioners. He took our authority for his own and represented it to an Appropriations Subcommittee. So when you ask the question, "What can we do?", we can do a lot. I just told you what we can do. We have the authority right now, today, to say, "You can't use our name without our authority. The people didn't get to speak. We didn't follow our own Board rules. We didn't follow statutes." We don't need the attorney to tell us that. That's the power vested in this Board. Right now, today, we can say, "Pull the bill, Mike." He said it in the paper. He said, "Alls I need is a majority, and I'll gladly pull the bill." He knows it. We know it. You don't have to find a statute that says, "We have no authority." And what you won't find in that statute is that he has authority over us. It's in the Constitution, gentlemen. I read it to you. It's in the statutes. That's our power as a Board. And to sit here and run circles around it for an excuse to perpetuate this thing is really shows contempt, not just for our Board rules and—the and the statutes and our authority, but for the taxpayers and citizens of Charlotte County, that we're willing to let this move forward in light of all of these facts. We can—you know, we might have not taken action on this according to the clarification letter, but we can take action today. We don't need anybody to tell us that. We can pull the bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Deutsch?
Yeah, I want to respond to that. And I—I take exception to what my colleague on my right said, that we did not follow Board rules. We never broke a Board rule. We never did anything which was wrong or illegal. We never did anything exclusionary. This Board did not—and—and that sort of—Joe, that's the biggest thing that bothers me, that your suggestion that the four of us have acted improperly, I take exception to, because we did not. We did not have any private discussions. We did not take a vote on anything. We did not make—and I think that's where the letter helps clarify it. And—and I—and I really don't believe anyone on this Board broke any Board rules. And I think the letter is clarifying that and making it pretty clear in terms of what took place.
Very good, sir. Commissioner Constance, you're up.
Commissioner Toseo, what would you change in this letter? Because this letter, according to the attorney, is an accurate representation of where the Board has been and currently is. So what is—what is incorrect in this letter, or what would you change in this letter?
Can I answer that, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to repeat everything I just said. But that paragraph that just said, "The Board took no action," do you understand that we have a appropriations request that made representations all the way to the governor's office that we actually took action and approved this? We didn't. So there is no change to the letter. There's only one outcome here. It's a—it's a flawed bill. It doesn't have the support of the Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners. So you're asking me how to make the letter better? There really is no way to make a letter better. That—that's my—my point.
If I—if I can get the—get the floor back. Okay, so with that said, I—I would love to hear somebody make a motion. If not, I'll make a motion to approve this letter, because this represents the accurate situation with this Board. We didn't file the bill. It is not our piece of legislation. And I—I'd have to ask the attorney about this, but I don't know that we have the authority to pull it. It's not ours. It's not ours. And honestly, you talk about other branches of government overstepping, okay? I don't feel it's our—our—our place to overstep and force somebody to do something else. Putting the truth out there and then letting the chips fall where they may has everything to do with putting an accuracy out there and accuracy—not inaccuracy—and accuracy out there that this is the truth and this is where the Board stands. And with this, any one of us can go to Tallahassee and go to the committee meetings and say, "Guys, this is where we stand."
Okay. So in response to that, Mr. Chair, Mike Grant said he got approval for this because he called all the commissioners up and got a majority vote on the phone, or however he did it. I'm just saying, that's how he said he did this. But we know that's wrong, right? We know what—the what he—the representation said he got Board approval, which means a public hearing, a public process.
Correct.
He also told us he'll pull the bill, gladly, he said, with a majority. So I don't understand, if he's telling us he'll pull the bill, he's giving us a pathway. I just don't understand, knowing what we know now, why we wouldn't exercise that pathway. It's the right thing to do.
But as far as point of order, I don't know if that's even a legal motion. In other words, we—we—it is not our piece of legislation. All we can do is give him where we stand, and this is an accurate representation of where we stand, and then this can get forwarded, and then it will be forwarded to the Appropriations Chair, to Mr. Grant, to the state senators, to everybody.
But we can't—we can tell him. We—we have the right to say, "Pull the bill."
You have the right, after this meeting is over, to get on the phone and call him up and say—
I did.
"I'm faxing this to you."
But—but here's the thing, he already said he'll gladly pull the bill with—he—he told us that. Alls we have to do is make a motion to pull the bill, and he'll do it. He's on the record.
I'll actually—I think you made a—you made a—
But I—I—I—I move—I—I move this letter.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion of second to approve this letter with the understanding, I think, in the motion, that it can be reformatted. My assistant could take and put it on the right letterhead. It'd be addressed to Representative Grant as the—as the chairman of our legislative delegation, along in carbon copy the—copy the Senator Ben Albritton, Senator Joe Gruders, and State Representative Ray Rodriguez, who's the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, I believe. And if I've misspoken or the names of people or whatever, I'd appreciate being clarified.
But I think—I—I think you had said those things at the very beginning, and those are included in my motion, Mr. Chair.
Very good. And then your second. The key—the key right now is—is that I want to try to get this out today electronically. So again, it—it—it gets—it gets received, and then, of course, we'll send it out in the mail. Commissioner Toseo, because we're in discuss—
Yeah, was there—was there a second on that motion? Yeah, I'm—I'm just—I just want to say for the record that today, the—the Board was advised by the county attorney that false representations were made, and—the and the Board failed to pull a bill, and we could have done that today. And it's just beyond belief. It's just beyond belief. I can't actually—it's surreal that I'm sitting here, knowing what we know, that we're going to let this thing continue to move through when we could have taken action today. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's for—
Commissioner Deutsch?
For the record, I don't think—we're authorized to have the legislature pull a bill or not, because it's not our legislation, it's not our bill, we never submitted it, and I believe that's up to the people at the State House. We can't pull a bill. And I think the letter suffices and makes our position very clear.
Very good. We have a motion of second. I don't see anybody else in the queue. We have a motion of second to authorize me to execute this letter, edit it as we've talked about. All those in favor?
Point of information, edited, what do you mean?
Reformatted.
Okay. Not edited, replaced on the proper letterhead and addressed to the proper person, but the body of the letter will stay exactly as—
I apologize for the incorrect words.
I just want to make sure that we have that straight. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say no?
Nope.
Okay, let the record show, the motion passes four to one with Commissioner Toseo dissenting.